Mr. Chair, we are live on YouTube.
Thank you. Are you good? Okay, good afternoon. Welcome, everyone. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. We'd just like to do some introductions. My name is Stan Kumorik. I will be your chair this afternoon. My fellow panel members, to my far-left Natalia Popovic, to my left Laura Alderson, to my right Rick Ross, and to my far-right Bill Dalton. I'd also like to introduce Barbara Bertozic, our Deputy Secretary Treasurer and General Manager for Atobico. Just want to do some preliminary remarks. Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that apply to property, permissions to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. Our land acknowledgement, we acknowledge the land we are meeting on is a traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnabi, the Chipewa, the Hutnashni, the Windat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Our procedure this afternoon, Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid and in-person virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, while others will do so virtually through electronic means called WebEx. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and have the option to participate via video or audio only. All virtual participants will be automatically muted on entry. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelist when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. All other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentation materials submitted in accordance with submission deadlines. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use share screen or any other panelist controls during your video appearance. Decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address as a Committee of Adjustment, and the Toronto Local Appeal Body will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto Local Appeal Body or, in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Now only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons, and public bodies are permitted to appeal decisions of the committee. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. Our procedure, we will go through each item as listed in order on the agenda. Where an application is not contested, an agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are advised, are asked to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may also question and/or take the matter into the committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching your five-minute mark. As mentioned earlier, any presentation or other material you wish to submit to the committee must have been submitted in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing today. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to the proposal at the hearing. The committee may decide to defer the application if there are substantive revisions to ensure that the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then individuals either in support or opposition to the application will be invited to speak. We generally call on speakers in the hearing room first and then those participating online. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant and/or agent has the opportunity to rebut, but only those issues that were raised by the previous speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Before we start, just wanted to ask if there are any declarations of interest for panel members or staff for any of the afternoon items? You're a frequent flyer.
Yeah, on item twenty-three.
Twenty-three, okay. Thank you.
As I am assisting, I'm assisting the Archdiocese on other matters, not this one, but...
Okay, well, I've gone to church once in a while. Should I accuse myself? Thank you. We'll catch you on that one. Twenty-three. The last item. Okay, deferral requests, I believe we have several for this afternoon. The first two, and also, is it item twenty-two, Madam Chair? Yeah, okay. So anyway, given that's the first two, we'll start with those in the order of the agenda. So that's item thirteen, which is fifty-six, fifty-eight, sixty, sorry, N sixty Fieldway Road. This is an application to obtain consent to sever the property into three lots and to sever the lots for the purposes of a lot addition and to create various easements and rights of way. And I believe the applicant is requesting a deferral. Just trying to get to my speaker's list. Isaac, online?
Yes, hi.
Good afternoon.
My name is Isaac Shirka. Yeah, good afternoon. I'm the Director of Development at Ellis Don Developments here on behalf of Fieldway Road Development, Inc. You're correct, we are requesting a deferral of this application. It's a stratified severance application for a multi-phase mixed-use development. About a week or two ago, we met with Toronto Buildings to discuss the permitting and discuss construction phasing, and there were a few questions that came out of that meeting that we need to resolve and needed additional time to resolve. And there is a chance that it could affect the boundary of the severance below grade, and we just want to make sure we sort it out before we proceed with the severance. So we're requesting defer to later date.
Absolutely, totally understood. Is there anyone else online or in person for this item?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Assuming not, okay. Committee members?
Sure, that makes complete sense. I'll move a motion to give the applicant time to work with building staff to defer this item.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Popovic. All in favor? Okay, the item is deferred.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item, which is also in order of the agenda, item fourteen, thirty-nine Yorkley Avenue. This is an application to obtain consent to sever the property into two undersized residential lots and various variances that would result from the construction of two new dwellings on those lots. And Andrew Plumbel?
That's me, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon. Panel members, members of Committee of Adjustment staff. My name is Andrew Plumbel of Ian Hall Planning Limited, thirty-eight Betty Nagle Street, Toronto, Ontario. Yes, this deferral request is being submitted basically to address an urban forestry memo that came in as a refusal memo, but as soon as it was received, it was understood and realized that this was based on an original plan, like an older plan. We would like to take the time, and rather than just assume urban forestry will be okay with the trees that are actually being proposed for removal, which are not in the memo, we'd like them to have an opportunity to review the updated arborist report and updated plans to ensure that there are no issues moving forward.
Okay. Also, I believe there's a number of speakers on this item. And I guess you've also seen sort of the opposition to this item, so you might want to take into consideration during your deferral time to do some processing with the neighbors potentially?
Absolutely. Potentially, with whatever we can resolve, we will try as well.
Okay, thank you.
Because I will say, my client has already canvassed the neighborhood. There are letters of support as well, but yes, obviously, we'll take that opportunity, take that time if we can to talk to some of the objectors as well.
Absolutely.
If I could add, just if you would specifically speak to a Mr. Joseph Kennedy, I believe his name is, at seven Yorkley Avenue, about the specific bylaw that was put into place to protect the lot sizes. So I'm just wondering, has your client actually had a conversation with Mr. Kennedy?
Not that I am aware of, but thank you for providing that. Panel member Alderson, if we could, that will take that into consideration moving forward as well?
It's actually in the, it's, there's an opposition letter there that actually speaks to this directly, so you might want to review that.
For sure, because what is before the committee are the variances that are on the notice, and it's a matter of maybe it involves clarification or just further discussion, as you suggested.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Was there anyone else in the room for this item? No?
So we got one person present online?
Online, okay. Is that Louise?
It is. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. So the applicant is requesting a deferral, which basically would mean that the item would not be dealt with today, and we just wanted to get your input into that.
That's fine. We'll wait until he comes back, once we come back.
If you could just state your full name and address for the record, please?
Sure, my name is Louise Santos, thirty-nine Yorkley Avenue. Oh, sorry, thirty, thirty-five.
Thirty-five, okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And we have no one else online?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So we'll take it into committee? So we have a request for a deferral?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I move to approve the deferral of this matter based on the request by the applicant and no opposition to the deferral.
Thank you, Mr. Popovic.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson. On favor? Okay, that item is deferred.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you, sir. Okay. We're going to skip over now to item twenty-two. Eight Park Lane. This is an application to maintain the two-story addition above the existing dwelling. Variances are being requested, and staff is requesting a deferral. I believe it's a notice issue.
The applicant has submitted a revised zoning review, and the variances are greater or in addition to what you have before you today.
And it's definitely a notice issue. Do we have the applicant online?
Good afternoon, committee members. My name is Dr. Evil.
Good afternoon. So you understand your situation?
I do. The only frustrating part of it, if I might be able to give you a little bit of the backstory of the project...
I know you've been deferred before, so it's not great to hear all of this now, but that's where we're at nonetheless.
What we're hoping for is that we're able to revise the figures as we originally asked. And if that's possible, if not, then our only solution is to defer. So that would be my request, if we can make those changes.
The applicant chose to submit a waiver and now has a zoning review, so they accepted responsibility for identifying the variances correctly. And planning is also asking for a deferral on this one.
If I may request, is it possible that the deferral fee is waived?
There's no...
We don't have a deferral fee.
There is no deferral fee.
Oh, sorry. Correct. Okay, so then yes.
Would you like one?
No. No, sorry, we do, I just got out of another committee hearing this morning. It ran out of Hamilton. Anyways. Yeah, understanding the situation again, it is a little bit frustrating. We've gone back and forth to clarify the variances. We've ordered a new survey. But yeah, seeing as it wasn't out, like the current variances that we're requesting were not on the latest notice. If we can't revise those, then yeah, it is what it is, and we have to defer.
Well, I mean, if your current variances are not reflected in your current drawings, then I don't think you have a choice.
We believe that they are. We did submit, and so the drawings are accurate. We've confirmed them. It's just a matter of them being different than what was sent out in the notice.
Well, that's the problem. It's a notice issue.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I mean, the reason is, with the public notice, the public has to be notified. Someone might come and do it if they knew what it was accurately.
We're reverting to the figures that were originally submitted. So the public is aware, there was no opposition. But again, you stand here today, deferred again. We have sorted it out with the planning department and the zoning department, so we know that at the next possible hearing date, we'll be prepared, and there shouldn't be any issue.
Third-time lucky.
Yeah.
Hopefully, you won't be faced with a strike in the interim. Is there anyone else to speak to this item? No?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, so we'll take it into committee for a decision then.
Given the notice issue, I'd move a motion for deferral.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. All in favor? The item is deferred. So we'll come back to the top of the agenda. So we're on to item fifteen. Fifty-six Whitfield Avenue. This is an application to construct a new detached duplex with an attached garage. There are three variances being requested. And we have an agent online. Oh, yeah.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. My name is Nadeem Irfan, NI Architects, representing the owners for fifty-six Whitfield.
Okay. I believe we're going to need a presentation and explanation with where you're at with forestry?
So I saw this memo just like a couple of days ago, and they are requesting some variances for the landscape to be kind of denied. Firstly, they are requesting even the lot severance. So here, I would request the staff to bring the location map on the screen. The lot proposed are basically are consistent with the lot of lots existing. If you look at on the right side of the property, fifty-four to forty-eight, there are four lots. I looked at the, on the online mapping, the lot frontage and lot area are consistent with what we are proposing. Then from the seventy-two to eighty-two...
Okay, actually, sorry, can I interrupt you for one sec? Because I think I skipped over something here in the introduction. We're going to pause your time. So this is actually a three-part application. It is an application to obtain consent and to sever the lot, to undersize lots. Forestry is recommending denial, or they have a couple of alternatives. And then it's also to construct two new duplexes with related variances. Sorry, if you can start over again.
Yes, so I would request the staff member to bring in the location map back on the screen. These are the two big lots, fifty-six and sixty, leftovers from the rest of the street lines. All those lots on the left side and the right side of fifty-six and sixty, they are consistent. Lot frontages are fifteen meter, and lot areas are about four-twenty-two, varying four-thirty. So once approved, fifty-six and sixty severed, they will all be consistent in terms of lot frontages and lot areas. So what we are requesting is inconsistent with what exists there before. The second variance is the, basically, the side yard setback. We are providing one-point-eight meter between the neighbors and us, and only requesting a point-three-meter reduction in the side yard in between the two new houses, which will still provide us approximately three meter, over three meter, which is more than ten feet between the lots to service the area. The rear yard setback is met, the front yard setback is met. It is not an overdevelopment. The landscape minor variances, because of these lots, have a hardship. The shape of these lots is not very square. So if you look at the part one, we're trying to save the tree number two, which is the city-owned tree. On the left of the tree, there is a light pole. Otherwise, we would have put a driveway on this side and have a larger piece of the lot where we are currently proposing the driveway would give me a landscape requirement met, basically comply sixty percent. We only have fifty-seven, three percent reduction we are asking. Similarly to this part two, which is the lot on the right, we have a hardship here, too. There is a privately owned tree, number one, which is basically they are discussing, the forestry discussing. In this way, we have an opportunity to save this tree, but if we switch the driveway on the left side, we may kill the tree, but we may comply with the landscape variance. So this configuration is probably the most probable outcome of these variances. And again, we're asking four percent of the landscape requirement. Now, we have to be mindful, if we are proposing duplex, there is no parking requirement. We could have omitted the garages, we could have omitted the driveway and come to meet the, comply with the variance and the landscape requirement. But this is not the intention. The homeowner wants to live here and rent out the basement, and we need the parking spots. So I believe these variances are very, very minor in nature, and I understand forestry will have a condition stipulated to this approval, and will have to get their approval before the severance can be matured. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Alderson, you have a question?
Yeah, I don't think that community planning has any conditions on this.
No, no.
It's urban forestry that I was hoping that you would address in your presentation. And it's specifically, I think, the red maple tree number two. And I'm wondering, if the driveway is on the left side, would you be able to save that red maple tree number two? Is that possible? I think that was the big issue. Red maple tree number one is not as majestic or as full, but it's red maple tree number two. So that's what I really want you to talk...
Hmm? Yes.
Sorry.
Through you, Mr. Chair. If staff can bring up the picture, which we submitted originally with the submission, there is a large electric pole there on the left of the maple tree.
Yeah, I see that.
Hydro pole.
I see that. So there's no way of saving red maple tree number two, is what you're telling me?
Tree number two will definitely be saved. We can probably reduce the requirement from the engineering is two-point-four or two-point-six bit of the driveway, which can be provided, and provided a more tree protection zone from the tree number two.
Okay, I don't know if we're so concerned with red maple tree number one, but anyway. Okay, thank you.
So that's the, forestry is talking about tree number one, which is a very small tree, and we will make an effort to save that.
Yeah, I mean, forestry does have an alternative suggestion, which is conditions one and two. So there isn't another way to address this.
But we could start with a TPZ on the trees.
For sure, for sure.
And see where it ends up, and then it may end up being one and two.
Are there, is there someone else online to speak to this?
Yes, we have one, Daniella.
Good afternoon, Daniella.
One second.
Okay, okay, let's just listen.
All right, go ahead.
Hi, did you want to speak?
Hello?
Hello?
Oh, hi. Am I unmute?
Well, you're unmuted, and you're ready, we're ready to hear you.
Great, thank you, thank you. So I'm a resident that lives in the neighborhood at near fifty-six Whitfield Avenue. And so the, at the beginning of the presentation, it mentioned similar properties. There are no detached homes on Whitfield, so this wouldn't be consistent with, sorry, with semi-detached. So I'm not sure there are no semi-detached on Whitfield?
He's not proposing semi-detached.
So it's one home, it's one large building that...
It's two homes, it's two homes on what would become two lots from the one lot.
Okay, okay, because from what we received, okay, so here's a picture of that, because from what my understanding was, a detached duplex.
It would be two detached duplexes.
Okay, so this, what you're showing us here on the screen is what the properties once built would look like?
Correct.
Okay, 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 thank you for clarifying that.
So you have no concerns then?
Well, I'm not necessarily sure at this point. I may have further concerns. I'm just, I'm going to continue listening to the presentation. But if it's two, one of my main concerns is that it was going to be a semi-detached for the purpose of rental use, resident, and so I just had a...
No, what's being proposed is two detached dwellings, both of which have more than one unit within them. But externally, they will look as no different than a single-family home.
Okay, so this is most likely for the purpose of renting?
Well, that would be the purpose of having a second unit, yes. And I believe what the applicant explained was that the owner wants to occupy one and rent out the other, which is what the city is encouraging right now.
And then rent out the other. Okay, yeah, I'm not sure if I have any other questions at this time, but we'll, throughout the progress of this project, we will be able to contact the City of Toronto if we do have any concerns?
Well, if there are issues with the construction, you can contact the buildings department.
Oh, sorry, I can't hear you?
If there are issues with the construction...
Sorry, I think we've cut out. I'm unable to hear you.
Well, I'm sorry, but our microphones are on. If you can't hear us, you've got a problem on your end.
Yeah.
Sure they call back, yeah?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, I'm unable to hear you.
Well, she can't hear me, so there's no point me telling her that.
No, you don't tell her.
Okay, are there any other speakers?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, if we can get the applicant back, then I'm not sure if a rebuttal is necessary, but it's his floor.
I cannot hear anything from the...
One second, I think we have some technical...
Committee members, if there were any questions.
Okay, so we appear to be having some technical issues, so...
I cannot hear anyone.
There you go. You can go ahead.
Can you hear us now?
Now I can hear you, sir.
Okay, good. Did you, were you able to hear the deputant before you?
Yes.
Okay. Was there anything you would like to say at this time?
So I would like to clarify, there are two houses. Homeowner has two sons, and they want to live here and rent the basements, potentially. This is the clarification I was given.
That's what we suggested to the other deputant, but I'm not sure if anyone heard, because we were accidentally muted here. So we'll leave it at that. Are there any questions from panel members? No? Okay, we'll take it into committee then. And I just, I'd like to start by making a comment that we've seen a lot of these, a lot of severance applications where there's a lot more variances that are resulting from the severance. And this applicant is making an effort to put a reasonable distance between the two houses as well, which we don't always see, but... So that's my two cents for discussion.
No, and with that, I believe the applications are very supportable. The variances that they're seeking are minor, and on that basis, I would move a motion for approval, subject to the forestry and ECS conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Seconder? Mr. Ross? All in favor? Okay, the application is approved unanimously. Thank you to the applicant and the deputent. Yeah, I need to straighten out my paperwork here. Skip the whole page. Okay. So now we're on to item sixteen, um, fourteen Princess Margaret Boulevard. This is an application that was deferred from October of twenty twenty four. Uh, it is an application to construct a new driveway. There are two variances, and I'm not clear on forestry, whether they're. No, okay, because I thought they were recommending refusal. There's an update, okay.
Sorry, did you say transportation, is it refusal still?
Okay, I don't see that, is that from the original application? Yeah. I didn't see anything. So can we just get a clarification, is transportation still have issues on this one?
Yeah, why is on the previous one?
Well, let's ask the applicant. What planning memo?
So their comments were that they can't support two access driveways, so that hasn't changed. I'm assuming their comments are still valid. We haven't received anything from them saying otherwise.
Okay, so they never updated that? Okay, so we'll assume that that's.
That's the two act points of access.
Oh, because this is a um circular driveway that's being proposed. Right, right, okay, got it. Yep. Okay, so let's hear from the applicant, um. Jerry?
Uh, can everyone hear me? Yeah, Jerry?
Yep.
Hey, uh, can you guys hear me?
We can hear you if you can just do, introduce yourself, please.
Okay, perfect, okay. Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Mr. Chair and members of the committee. My name is Jersey Rabianski of Still Design Inc. of three dash seventeen fifty, the Queen's Way, Toronto, Ontario. I will be representing the owners of fourteen Princess Margaret Boulevard. So I will start off saying that uh all the, all the departments, uh, city departments have cleared this application, from what I understand. I do have emails, um, them clearing everything, and this was a part of the process in setting up the new date, that all um departments did have to clear this before a new date was scheduled. So I do have all the emails from each um department clearing these, this new revised set of plans.
Uh, maybe I'm missing something here, but it looks like uh transportation from October tenth has not been rescinded, the comment.
Actually, I think it has, I think it has.
Excuse me for interjecting, I believe there's a memo dated January twenty fourth that says there are no longer any concerns from urban forestry and transportation staff. Planning staff are fined for the proposal to be rescheduled. Dated January twenty fourth, twenty twenty five.
Who's that from?
It's from Cameron Rose, Assistant Planner, Community Planning.
But we don't hot, I don't know that community planning should be speaking for transportation.
Yeah. It's an email.
And the email in contains an email from forestry, but there's nothing from Transportation Services.
So I I do have that email um from transportation, and that was sent, it was uh sent to everybody, including uh the planning staff. So I'm not sure why they echoed that, but uh it it is on file, and we do have that available.
Can we, wa- was that uploaded to the ACI?
Is that a question for me?
Yes.
Uh, no, I did not upload that. I uh assumed that uh those documents would have been uploaded by the um ci- city staff. Um, clarifying that all of those have been ironed out, so I'm not sure what happened. As you, you do have a document from forestry and urban and planning staff, so I.
Well, we only have a current document, that's the problem. We only have a current document from planning, not from forestry. So if you have that document, perhaps you could submit it. We'll stand this item down and come back to it, is that fair?
No, the forestry email is embedded in there.
It's transportation we don't have.
Right.
Sorry, did I say forestry? Okay. Yeah, no, no, my mis- my mistake, i- i- it's transportation we don't have.
Well, that was the point I was trying to make. We haven't got anything that supersedes the October.
Yeah, I mean, normally we don't take material at the hearing, but given that the circumstances, um, if you can send that to.
There's nothing, he hasn't submitted anything to the file, I've checked the file.
Well, he he said he didn't submit it.
Pardon?
He said, he he concurs that he did not submit it.
Okay, so it's two, he should have submitted that before he. They addressed it, but it didn't come from. No department should speak for another.
But it was, so if. From what I understand, it's actually just, uh, there was no report. It was an email uh stating that the uh concerns were were.
We have that from community planning, we do not have that from Transportation Services. And normally, they copy us when they do have that type of information to provide. They wouldn't just provide it to planning, they would have copied us. We don't have anything from Transportation Services. So do you have anything from Transportation Services directly saying that they're okay now with the two-point access?
Yes, I do have an email from Transportation that I will have to, um, who am I sending this to?
Who's your technician? Oh.
I think it was Annalissa.
Okay, so we're gonna come back to this item, we're gonna stand it down. Um, I don't know how long it'll take you to get that information.
Okay, it shouldn't take long, I will have that shortly.
Okay, thank you, we'll come back to it. Item seventeen. One oh seven Hadrian Drive. This is an application to construct a new garden suite in the rear yard. There are two variances being requested. Forestry is requesting condition two. Planning is requesting two conditions in the event of approval. Mr. Galbraith is online.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Back again.
Okay, um, looks like a fairly straightforward application. I don't think we need a full presentation. If you can give us a brief overview and uh we'll open for questions, is that fair?
Last time we, last time we were here, there was some confusion regarding the conditions that planning uh had requested, and so we were deferred so that those could be sorted out. We're happy to be able to tell you that those conditions have been sorted out and are reflective of the ones that are before you. We are in full agreement with uh with those conditions, we have no concerns. This application is effectively um identical to two others that this committee has approved in the neighborhood um in last six months or so that I worked on.
Yep.
Um.
I think there was some confusion last time as to which side the door was going on or something.
That is exactly correct, you're remembering it well. Um, and the door is on the side, and the condition ties the plant, ties the approval to the plans that have the door on the side.
Perfect.
That has been resolved with the planning satisfaction.
And apparently ours. Thank you.
Wonderful. I'm very glad to hear that.
Okay, uh, I'm assuming there's no one else to speak to this item?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so I'll take it back into committee. Anyone ready for, any other questions? If not, anyone ready for a motion?
Sure. Uh, based on that, I'd like to move a motion for approval, as I believe the application meets the four tests subject to the planning and forestry conditions.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second up motion.
Thank you, on favor. Okay, that application is approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Galbraith. Item eighteen. Which is thirty-two Bernice Avenue. This application was deferred from January of this year. It is an application to construct a rear two-story addition and second-story addition above the existing dwelling along with a cabana in the rear yard. There are four variances being requested. The applicant has provided an arborist report. Uh, forestry was requesting deferral, or in the alternative, uh, condition one, perhaps we can get the agent to address forest, their position on forestry.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, panel members and staff. My name is Luis Bahanya, address is four Mon Hall Road. Um, yeah, so we do see forestry's comments, so we've been working back and forth since the first of deferral. So what the changes we've been made was, so before there's an existing pathway that leads kind of from the front porch to the front, to the front of the street, that's no longer, you know, if we were to keep that, it becomes an issue because it cuts kind of right through the tree, even though it's existing. So our plan to rectify this and obviously make less of an impact along with the arborist report is to remove that path from the front porch to the street and just have a direct path that goes from the front porch to the driveway. So we're just basically minimizing the path and potential, you know, uh, damage and all that stuff to the tree. I do see forestry's comments, um, you know, we're more than happy to work with them. I know the arborist suggested using something like hydro excavation, which we have no problem. The front, there's also an existing front porch that, you know, typical frost walls, four feet down. We're, we're gonna be relocating that over to the side over, but you know, instead of maybe doing a typical frost wall, we can do something like a floating slab just to minimize the impact, you know, to this existing tree that's um, it's a bylaw-protected tree. So uh, we're more than we're willing to work with it, we actually love it, the owners love it as well. So we'll do everything in our power, obviously, you know, tree protections, of course, and everything else that the arborist and the city recommends.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there anyone else to speak to this item?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any questions? No? So let's take it into committee. So forestry condition one is the alternative to the deferral?
Yep. And with that, I'd like to move a motion for approval. I believe the application meets the four tests subject to the forestry condition.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton, second. Thank you, Mr. Ross, all in favor? A unanimous approval. Yeah, we're uh, no dissents today. Okay, um, item nineteen. Five Redcar Avenue. This was deferred from, also from January of this year. This is an application to construct a new school with a fence along the property line and adjacent to Highway four twenty seven and an ance- ancestral, ancestry structure, a garbage, a garbage enclosure in the front yard. Uh, there are two variances being requested. This was deferred because I think we needed some clarification on the drawings. Do we have someone online?
Yes, we have the agent on, I'll connect.
Okay.
Good afternoon, my name's Maureen O'Shaughnessy from C S and P Architects, uh, representing Toronto Catholic District School Board, who is the applicant. Uh, my address is twenty-three forty-five Young Street, Toronto. Um, so I wanted to speak briefly to the two items. Uh, the first item is related to the ancillary structure, which is the garbage enclosure. Um, and it's important to understand the site, and I will refer to the um revised plan package in my comments. So the site has very limited street frontage in terms of what's considered a front yard. So the front yard is Redcar, maybe we could go to the site plan, which is uh, uh, drawing number two in the site plan, in the plan package. Um, the, the second street is the East Mall, which we cannot have any access off of. And then on the west and the south, we have the four twenty seven. Right? And if you, you might zoom in to where the enclosure is, so you can see on the west and the south, we have the four twenty seven. Uh, Redcar to the north is our main frontage and.
And you have an off-ramp on the south then?
That's right, yeah. So we um, so we have, we have limited frontage on the site. Uh, the school is uh being increased in size, so we're replacing an existing school, and the school is increased in size. We are providing underground parking so that we can maximize the play area on the site. Uh, being adjacent to the four twenty seven on two of our site boundaries means that we lose fourteen meters of the site to setbacks. Um, so it really limits the amount of space we have on the site to uh, to locate the garbage enclosure. So that is why we've located the garbage enclosure at that location at the corner of Redcar and the East Mall. Uh, the garbage enclosure is designed architecturally to complement the building design itself. It's screened with landscaping so that uh it actually, that corner at Redcar in the East Mall becomes a kind of public space, you know, a kind of setting for the community amenity. And so the uh, the landscaping screens the enclosure. The enclosure is also located so that we can minimize the large truck movements on the site for the safety of the children and pedestrians on the site. So given the particular configuration of the site, there were not better locations to put that enclosure. And architecturally, we've done everything that we can to screen it and to make it part of the building architecture. So that was the um, the first variance. The second is related to the height of the fence along the East Mall. So there is a current playground now along the East Mall. And uh, that is enclosed right now by a two point four meter high, so that is an eight-foot frost fence. We are uh proposing a one point eight meter high fence where the bylaw says one point two is permitted. Uh, one point two meter high fence is not adequate to provide for the safety of the children on the site. Not only can they climb it, they will also potentially be kicking balls over it. And so for it's the safety and security of the children that we are proposing it. We are not obviously using a frost fence, we are using a decorative metal fence. So if um, if you go to page twelve of the drawing package, there are some renderings. And the renderings show you the character of what we're doing, because I think the character of the, both the fence and the garbage enclosure do kind of meet urban design requirements and would suggest that these are minor variances that should be approved. So can the um, whoever's controlling the drawings go to page twelve of this package? We could just have a quick look at the renderings. They're not paying attention to me, the person in charge of the drawings.
Sorry about that, just a little bit. Yeah, sorry, I was paying attention, it's just slow to switch, so.
Thank you. Yeah, so it's the last page of the package.
Sorry, again, it's taken me a little bit of time to get there due to the size of the plan, so we'll pause your time and I'll get up the appropriate drawings for you.
Trying to pull it up on my computer, and I can attest to the slowness of things moving through there.
Uh, okay. And we'll, we'll just look at two of the renderings when you get there.
So at least it's not the usual chain link schoolyard fence.
There you go. Yeah, that's correct. So if you zoom in on the um, on the right-hand side, the middle image, uh, that's an image that shows the uh, the enclosure that is considered to be in the front yard. And you can, you can see that we're creating a kind of garden landscape and that the uh, the wall of the enclosure is about two point three meters high, and it is made of the same material of the rest of the building. So we're really trying to use it to create a bit of a garden wall that creates that um space while screening the, the garbage pickup. So that's the first image, and the second image is the one just to the left of that, which shows a view along the east wall of the decorative fence, which encloses the play area. And because, also because it's vertical, the kids can't climb it as opposed to a frost fence, which is, you know, a chain link fence is unattractive, so this is an attractive fence, but it is. unattractive, so this is an attractive fence, but it is the one-point-eight meters, not the one-point-two meters. So I just wanted you to be able to see those couple of images that illustrate what we're trying to achieve here.
Okay, very good. I'm actually surprised you're, you're not going for higher than one-point-eight.
Well, we did have two-point-four, but you know...
Yeah.
If they were high school students.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I was gonna say, any questions? We have two other people listed, but they're not, they're part of the application. I'm assuming there's no one else to speak to this issue.
Yes, so we have a Larry Silva. He's on virtually, and then we have Teresa Leibinski.
Okay, but are they both not T D S, T C D S B?
So the Larry Silva, when I was signing up, he's, put himself as the owner. So I just put owner and then Teresa, we didn't email, she's the trustee, and she would like...
Okay, well, um... Trustee. Okay, I mean, we've, we've had the presentation. You know, essentially, allying trustees or other members of the school board at this point would be a duplication of, uh, of the presentation. So unless there's anyone here from the neighborhood or in opposition, we're going to take it into committee.
Yeah, there is no one from the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
If anyone has questions, no? Then I'm prepared to make a motion. I'm satisfied that this meets the four tests. I think it's very desirable, I think it's an attractive design for what it's worth, and move for approval. No variances?
No conditions.
Sorry, no, no conditions. No, there were variances, uh, no conditions, sorry.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous approval, thank you. Yeah, I'm gonna come back to him. Okay, we're gonna, uh, jump back to the item that we were holding. Which was item sixteen. Fourteen Princess Margaret Boulevard. And an issue here is whether we had a sign-off from transportation or not.
So yes, Mr. Chair, Adam, we're not sharing it. Transportation Services did send an email to the applicant, the applicant did not share it with us. So yes, they're okay with it now.
Okay. I, I, I think committee members just wanted to, um, to know whether all the departments have signed off or not, so... So, so now that you know that, yeah, we'll take it back to committee. Absolutely. So planning, transportation, and forestry are all okay with it now.
So there's no outstanding issue?
That's the way I would read it. Is anyone ready for a motion? On item sixteen?
I am, because that's what I wanted to find out.
Okay.
So now that I have, I will move a motion for approval as I believe the application meets the four tests, and there are no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Dal...
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Alderson, all in favor? Okay, unanimous approval. And I guess a lesson for the applicant to submit all your paperwork. So... I'm lost now, where are we? Twenty, item twenty, okay, got it. Okay, nineteen thirty-six Lawrence Avenue West, this was deferred from January as well. Yep. This is an application to construct a three-story apartment building. A total of eight dwelling units are being proposed. There are twelve variances being requested. Forestry is requesting condition one in the event of approval. We have, um, an objection letter from the neighbor to the rear. And I believe that's all we have. Well, and forestry. Agent is online?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair.
Good afternoon, sir. Can you give us a presentation, please? I believe we have, um, other speakers on this item as well.
Certainly, if staff could please share our presentation material, I'll walk you through the application. The application before you is to modify an existing building permit. A permit has been issued for a fourplex in the form you see here. This minor variance proposal will not change the exterior of the building, only alter the interior to create a total of eight units, as you mentioned. Uh, and it was previously deferred, so we could have more time to confer with neighbors, which we have now done. Next page, please. The diagram you're about to see on the left indicates the current configuration. The right is the proposed. The proposed building will contain one studio unit, which is a barrier-free unit, three one-bedroom units, and four two-bedroom units. Every unit has its own entry directly to outside, giving all units a front door, so to speak. And this is a strategy to appeal more like townhouses or multiplexes and other ground-oriented units. Next page, please. The site is located on Lawrence Avenue, just east of Weston. It's a ten-minute walk from the Go and Up stations and is served by bus. This is an area of oncoming change. All of the residential properties you can see in this photo are already entitled to five units as of right. In addition, council's major street policy will be upzoning Lawrence Avenue to six stories and sixty units. That policy was approved by council last year, but has been delayed by developers who are trying to expand its permissions beyond six stories and sixty units, which is why this application is here. We did not find it prudent to wait for major streets to go into effect, since we are well under its forthcoming permissions. Rather than continue to delay delivering rental housing, this type of development is already contemplated in the official plan and council's E H O N efforts. And our discussions with city planning staff determined that moving forward with minor variances was appropriate at this time. Next page, please. Actually, if you could skip ahead to the site plan. I'll speak specifically to the minor variances. Uh, I will note that we followed the multiplex bylaws to determine the form. That includes height, depth, and setbacks, as is evidenced by our existing permit. However, when we get to eight units, there are variances related to parking and soft landscaping. These were a compromise we reached in consultation with planning staff and neighbors. We actually could have eliminated all parking and landscaping variances entirely if parking was eliminated, since we don't have a parking requirement. But it was determined that keeping a parking space was desirable, even though it resulted in a reduction of soft landscaping. There are also variances for bike parking and bin storage. Essentially, once a property has over five units, the current bylaws treat it the same as a high-rise and ask for those to be internal to the building. This is a key missing-middle housing challenge and will be addressed in the forthcoming major street policy. But we attempted to address it by locating bins in an exterior enclosure, by providing a visitor bike parking space in the rear yard. And usually occupants will hang bikes within their units in this form of housing. It's also important to see which variances are not present. There's no variance for a number of units, height, depth, or other key factors that tend to relate more closely to build form and desirable density. We went to efforts to only have variances related to site treatment, and we came to them in collaboration with community planning. Uh, I'll also note, we're accepting of community planning's recommendation for a condition tied to plans because those were critical elements in our discussions. If staff could go to the final page. I'd like to conclude by reflecting on this typology in general. We're seeking a large number, or sorry, we're seeing a large number of new projects that are under four stories, located on major streets. This missing-middle typology is actually less dense than it is permitted in many areas, but it's more advantageous to pursue because it avoids the need for elevators, it's wood frame construction, it fits within residential servicing requirements, and it creates ground-oriented housing units that are filling the gap between high-rise and single-family homes. This is a burgeoning solution that's being embraced by council and the province. And we believe this is a perfect location to realize reasonable compromises for site treatments in exchange for missing-middle housing on a major street near a major transit node. And thank you, pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions before we go to the next speaker? Okay. We have someone else online?
Yes, so we have an area resident present. I'll connect him now.
Good afternoon, is that Leah?
Yes, good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yes, could we just get your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, I am, my name is Leah Martelutzi, and I am, I along with my husband are the property owners of nineteen thirty-eight Lawrence Avenue West. It's the abutting property to the west of this proposed development.
Okay, thank you.
So I'd like to start off by saying good afternoon to the Chair and Committee of Adjustment members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today about our concerns with regards to the proposed minor variance application for nineteen thirty-six Avenue West, Lawrence Avenue West. Again, my name is Leah Martelutzi, and my husband and I are the property owners of the single dwelling at nineteen thirty-eight Avenue West. And, you know, we have concerns with the application as it is, um, how it has been submitted. Sorry, a little bit nervous here. After further research, we submitted our letter of communication in January to the committee. And after further research, we've come to understand this application was permitted as of right. I would like to express that we do not oppose redevelopment, uh, you know, redevelopment brings change. However, we do believe that the permitted as-of-right development approach is not a one-size-fits-all for all neighborhoods. And although I understand that council has passed that, it is still, um, not, um, fully passed, if, if, for lack of better words. And today I wanted to share our views about the application and the impact on our property that we believe it will have, not only on our property, but adjacent neighbors. As outlined in our letter to committee members on January sixteenth, I would like to reiterate the following comments and concerns with additional points that the current proposed minor variance application on nineteen thirty-six will have. To begin, uh, there's been, there was a little bit of confusion at the beginning where the application lists the existing dwelling at nineteen thirty-six Lawrence Avenue West as being a three-story fourplex, when the actual dwelling is pictured and indicated on the survey as a single-story brick dwelling. I believe this was communicated at the last Committee of Adjustment in January, however, has not been updated to reflect the existing one-story dwelling on site. The same applied, um, previously, but I see has been changed with respect to the ground floor, second floor, and third floor. This caused a little bit of confusion, um, especially for, you know, area residents that would not understand, and it's very difficult for a person to, to navigate through all this, not knowing, you know, the exact, um, you know, bylaws. Having said that, um, we are now noting that the fourplex is proceeding to be an eightplex. And although I've tried to understand and I've looked at the four criteria that consists, consists of, um, constitutes a minor variance, I'm a little bit confused, and I feel that I'm not sure if this is a minor variance or, in my opinion, a major variance. So our concerns are as follows, and please stop me if you have any questions. It is our understanding that the application requirement on the west side setback for abutting properties is two-point-five meters. The current is one-point-one-two meters, and it's less than half of the recommended minimum. However, it's not changing. But it is essential to note that how close each property is to one another along this strip of Lawrence Avenue West, and the impact the proposed application will have to a property if a one-point-one-two-meter guard setback west side is maintained and the one-point-five-meter soft landscape strip requirement is removed. Perhaps this minimal distance can be considered suitable for neighboring one-story homes. However, applying the same consideration to a three-story apartment building will impact the properties further. We have concern with privacy as well. We have stated in our letter that as per the proposed drawings, the rear balcony on the second and third floor shown overlook the west, east, and north neighboring backyards and will negatively impact our enjoyment of privacy. We, uh, we were requesting that this consideration be considered and that the balcony be removed due to these privacy concerns. Uh, we do not have the concerns with the deck on the ground floor, as mentioned, um, as this will not be impacted. As we are considering, we are also requesting that the committee, um, consider replacing the current chain-link fence with a larger, more private fencing of, uh, six foot or what the required bylaw requires to further provide a buffer between our properties. There are also two windows on the west side, third floor of the proposed apartment building. And we have concerns, again, with privacy on this. When looking at, um, the architecture presentation, you, you view the, the apartment from the front and, um, basically east side. However, we don't see that rendition of the back and the impact it will have to those neighboring properties. We did reach out to the, um, owner and architect by phone and email after seeing the posted correspondence on the City of Tor, of the City of Toronto Committee of Adjustment website on February twenty-fifth. We had a discussion of our concerns.
You're at five minutes now, but I'm gonna let you continue on because you got off to a bit of a shaky start. But you start thinking about wrapping up, please.
Thank you. We believe that even though the information provided was helpful, we are still strongly concerned with the impact of this development on the property and neighborhood. In conclusion, I want to thank the committee for their time, and would respectfully request the committee to take our considers and comments into consideration once again. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions from panel members?
Could, could you give me your address again, please?
Next door, um, nineteen thirty-eight.
Nineteen forty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
We are the owners of nineteen thirty-eight Lawrence Avenue West.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, so we had a, a late, uh, person here, so we got David Grove.
Sorry, I just wondered if anyone else had any questions. That's okay. So come on up, come on up.
Good afternoon, committee members. Uh, my name is David Grove, I live at seventy-three Boyd Avenue. And it was on my understanding I could submit a petition signed by many, twenty of my neighbors, but apparently I have to do that by email, so I will do that later this afternoon. My apologies for that. So my wife and I are long-term residents of Weston, and we appreciate that some improvements are necessary, but not at the expense of other residents. We believe that bylaws are made for builders to follow and to protect the residents of our city. We ask that the city Committee of Adjustment enforce these minimum standards on our behalf for the following reasons. All of these so-called minor variances add up to a major deviation and should be rejected. Insufficient soft skate is a major issue and one that our mayor is concerned about, namely flooding. I come here today after dealing with water runoff into my own backyard from a neighbor's property on Lawrence. That property is totally hardscaped. I can spend hours pumping out water after a heavy rain in order to prevent damage to my own garage and house. That will be a problem for the households that abut this property. And in the winter, wherever they put the snow. This development seeks to cram in a structure that can't comply with the standards for such a small lot. He is asking for substantial variances for parking by not providing sufficient spots. That isn't a realistic solution. Just because this is a street with buses does not preclude the fact that people won't have cars. Street parking is already an issue in our area. Permitting an apartment building like this will just compound that problem. Where will delivery drivers park? In the neighbor's driveway, perhaps? There is no provision for proper coverage storage for garbage. That is another variance that shouldn't be allowed. One would be looking at eight times three if you approve an eightplex instead of a fourplex, which makes twenty-four bins, not the six that he shows in his drawing. They will be an eyesore and an open dinner for rats and raccoons. And on garbage day, they will become an obstacle to pedestrians out front, to schoolkids on the way to see our marshals. In my opinion, this is a rooming house, not an apartment complex. It will overshadow its neighbors. Reviolation should be done in compliance with the city's bylaws and not to minimize them. Otherwise, you create a precedent for the demise of an area. The concept of the Weston Community for Families to Live needs to be maintained. This development isn't for the owner to live here, but to turn a profit at our expense. Please consider the position signed by twenty current neighboring taxpayers, and the lady that was on the phone, I missed her, so that'll make twenty-one, and reject all the variances for an eight-unit apartment complex. I will submit the signatures by email. I will submit the signatures by email as requested, as I assume that I could do them in person, but apparently I can't. And also, I'd like to comment that we were not given notice to prior meetings or decisions regarding this site. Thank you, and I hope you reject all of his.
Thank you, and don't go away, just, does anyone have any questions?
Sir, it has, the petition you have has twenty signatures on it?
It does, yes.
From Boyd Avenue?
Boyd and Lawrence, yes.
And Lawrence, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Basically, everyone that is on Boyd is behind this and will be overlooked by this property and they totally object to it.
And did anyone reach out to councillor Nunziata?
She apparently told me that she has submitted a letter to the committee.
That's another one we didn't get.
I, I got that to notice this morning, that she had made a comment and when I talked to her yesterday, she also contred that she was going to.
Thank you, because that's...
That's two that we didn't get from her.
Okay. And has Forestry made any...
They all came late.
They all came late?
Yeah.
But do you have, do you have that? Okay.
Has Forestry made any comments regarding this?
They're requesting condition one, which is basically to protect the city-owned tree.
Yeah.
So, do we have, we didn't get anything from councillor Nunziata?
We did, it came late.
I think I have it on my phone, I can give it to this gentleman over here.
Well, we should have it, actually.
It's not in the additional material?
No, because it came late.
It came after that.
Came after the, the close-off.
I'm sight impaired, so I missed some of the conditions when I read the, read the letter. I'm legally registered with CNIB, so I apologize for my late submission.
Okay, thank, thank you for, for your presentation.
Thank you.
I'm gonna come back to, is there anyone else just before I, to speak? No, okay.
Here's the letter from the councillor.
In opposition?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we have that up, we can get the applicant back?
Hello, I'm back.
Okay. Your, your chance to do a rebuttal.
Certainly, so, we actually have been reviewing this application with the councillor's office since January. So, it's important to note that in her letter, the only concern she has relates to bicycle parking, visitor parking, landscaping and waste and recycle storage.
That's a number of issues.
Which is in, indeed, indeed. And I wish the councillor had spoken to us again. When we first contacted her office, it was expressed to us that there were no concerns, but all of these issues, we also reviewed with City of Toronto Community Planning. And as I mentioned in my presentation, it was perceived as an ideal compromise to maintain parking on the site, even though it is possible to eliminate parking and not trigger any variances, even though that resulted in less soft landscaping. We still made every effort to maintain a landscaping strip on the side of the building, as is typical for houses on Lawrence, but also maintain the side driveway and maximize soft landscaping front and rear. And city planning did find that to be suitable and have suggested being tied to site plan because they want to maintain the proposal as designed. So, that, that's something we're willing to accept and we think addresses the councillor's concerns, as well as hopefully most of those of the neighbor. I'll circle back to Ms. Martalucy's comments. I can assure her and the committee that this is a minor variance application. There is no variance for unit count and certainly nothing that would consider rezoning or official plan amendments. So, this is a minor variance application. And although we do not specifically apply to the apartment requirements, we do comply with the multiplex bylaws for a building of this size, which is why we felt that the site treatment was suitable because the volume and shape you see here can be constructed today and probably will be constructed today regardless of today's outcome. We did have discussions with the neighbors and the owner is fully agreeable to maintain the bins in a fully enclosed bin enclosure. That's a condition we'd be happy to accept if the committee would like to apply it. And similarly, we're committed to fencing in the rear yard, especially along the west lot line, which was discussed with those neighbors. That's a condition we'd be willing to accept as well. We did make efforts to limit the glazing on the west side to clear story windows. We do require windows in bedrooms along that face of the building, but we specifically elevated them to ensure there would be no overlook into adjacent yards. We'd also be willing to accept a condition for privacy screening on the sides of the rear balconies to ensure no overlook on that property as well, if the committee would like it. Were there any other comments I missed, Mr. Chair? I'm happy to continue to elaborate if there's anything.
I'm not sure, that's, that's really your, your job, not mine. But we will have some more questions for you at the end of this, so.
Understood.
If you're done, that's great. You can sit down, sir, thank you.
I, I express a concern about...
Sorry, sir, you've had your opportunity.
No, I was, you gave him a rebuttal, why can't I rebut his?
The agent has the right to rebuttal.
I see, alright.
Thank you.
Okay, I just, to the agent, I believe you made a comment about if you provided no parking, there would be fewer variances, but you would still have a number of variances. So, let's just be clear, you would still have a number of variances. Would you not?
Yes, sir, that's right. We would have eight variances instead of the twelve before you. However, if the side driveway and parking was eliminated, the soft landscaping and parking variances wouldn't be required.
No, understood, but you would still have eight other variances.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay, I just want to make that clear because it's not like you would have no variances. Okay, please.
So, variance number one, to me, is the one I'm questioning the most, which is a minimum required lot rentage of twenty and you're taking it down to ten-point-eight-nine meters. Do you have examples of other such developments, applications in this area?
Certainly, so first of all, we are not altering the lot size as part of this application, that's an existing condition. However, immediately across the street are other multi-unit buildings that were constructed on existing lots of similar sizes.
Those buildings that you're referring to, that's an actual complex, it's not standalone buildings, is it?
No, sir, there are, I believe, two or three multiplexes immediately across the street. Forgive me, I don't have the number, but it's approximately nineteen forty-one Lawrence Avenue West. There is a complex slightly west of us that is townhouses, that's not what I'm referring to.
So, nineteen forty-three, nineteen thirty-nine?
I believe nineteen thirty-seven is one.
And then nineteen thirty-one looks to be even smaller. Do you have any information on those?
Yeah, well, how many units are there in those?
Exactly, that's what I'm looking for.
I'm sorry, I do not have that information.
It says suites five to ten at nineteen forty-seven, so I assume there are five apartments in each... In each building?
Okay, not, not, certainly not eight.
Certainly not eight and, you know, eight in that small building seems exactly, as someone mentioned, that it was more of a rooming house than an apartment building.
Oh, I, I very strongly disagree with that. Half of our units are realistically sized two-bedroom units. This is far from a rooming house and I think that's a very important distinction.
What is the square footage on those units?
The, they are eight-hundred forty-seven, eight-fifty-one, eight-sixty-eight and eight-sixty-seven, so all mid-eight-hundred square feet. And, you know, I also want to point out, we have a barrier-free unit in here. Like, this is the farthest thing from a rooming house possible. These are all independent rental units that are not intended to be mixed together. This is very different from a rooming house.
Okay, any other questions? Taking it into committee then?
Chair, do we get a chance to see the councillor Nunziata's letter?
It was, it was on screen a few minutes ago.
I sort of read it through from the screen.
She had cons... Okay, I, I think what we have here is an application that's basically jumping the gun a little bit, assuming that the Major Streets Initiative will be passed in the form that it was proposed. As, as we all know, it's currently under, under appeal. And being, yeah, so we don't really know what the new rules will be. And given that this is a, I also want to make a footnote that this part of Lawrence is not part of the original avenues that were identified in the original official plan.
No, and similar to the earlier application that we had, which I think was item number four on Longborough, I want to approve it. I think it's, you know, with the direction of what city council wants to do.
But it's hard to understand what the context is going to be.
And to have further evidence and support of it, I think, would be very helpful. And on that basis, I would move a motion to refuse it.
Okay. Do you want to do some more discussion?
Yeah, no, I just want to add, I'm going to second that motion, but I just want to add that the concept is good. I just don't feel that this is the right location for it. Not that I oppose it per se, but I just oppose the in-location of this, so.
Well, personally, I think it's the right location, but the undersized lot for it.
Well, that's what I mean, it's an undersized lot, therefore it's the wrong location.
Okay.
So, I'm going to move for refusal.
So, you're seconding?
Sorry, second, I'm seconding it, yes.
Okay, we have a motion to refuse, all in favor? Opposed? We're staying unanimous today, it's refused. Okay, thank you. Shall we continue on or do people want to break? Yeah, okay.
Power through, yes.
Power through. Item twenty-one, forty-seven Bellman Avenue. This is an application to construct a new detached dwelling with a cabana and a garden suite in the rear yard. There are six variances being requested. Forestry is requesting conditions two and three. Planning is requesting a condition of approval tying to plans in the event that we approve. There is an objection petition with fifteen signatures. There are letters of objection from both immediate neighbors. Gotta go to my next page for a speaker's list. Joe Dome, I believe, is the agent online. Joe, are you there?
Joe Dome, one thirty-three, Torresdale Avenue, agent for the owner.
Okay, I, I think we're gonna need a, a full presentation on this one.
Yes, the owner would like to construct a new two-story dwelling and a rear yard garden suite to accommodate multi-generational family needs. There is an existing rear detached garage to be demolished in favor of an integral garage. We have worked with planning staff to put forward a proposal that they support and have made a number of revisions in accordance with their recommendations. Variance number one and five refer to the proposed north side yard setback of the dwelling and rear deck of zero-point-nine-one meters. This zero-point-nine-one meters applies to a nine-point-seven-meter portion of the north side wall, whereas the remainder widens to a one-point-one-meter setback. This provides adequate space between the dwellings and is consistent with other setbacks, such as fifty-two A and B Bellman, approved at T-Lab, which have zero-point-six meters and zero-point-nine meter setbacks for each. The south side yard setback complies with the bylaw, as does the front yard setback. Variance number two refers to the proposed length of eighteen-point-nine-nine meters. However, there is a significant breakup of massing on the north side and south side of the dwelling. The revised drawings have flipped the garage to the south side of the dwelling, which mitigates the impact for length of the dwelling because the length along the, the north side is now seventeen-point-seven-three meters and the length on the south side is seventeen-point-four-five meters. The proposal also complies with the bylaw for FSI and lot coverage. This also allows for preserving the original driveway location, which leads to variance number four, and, and this pertains to the proposed driveway width of four meters. I'll note that this driveway width is actually being reduced in size compared to the existing large driveway, as shown on the, the survey. Transportation also has no concerns with this variance. Variance number three refers to the proposed dwelling height of seven-point-eight meters and this variance is, will have minimal impact over the as-of-right height of seven-point-five meters. And there are a number of other examples in the area, such as fifty-two Bellman. Variance number six refers to the garden suite area of eighty-six square meters. An important point of context here is that there is an attached cabana. The floor area of the garden suite itself is sixty square meters, which does comply with the bylaw. And the attached cabana is twenty-six square meters, as planning staff has noted. Essentially, the cabana was not proposed attached, then the garden suite would be fully as-of-right under the bylaw. The cabana being on the north side avoids any potential tree impacts to the neighboring trees on the, on the south side. And I, I'd just like to acknowledge that we have read the letters from the neighbors, including the petition, and we do appreciate the neighbors' concerns, of which a main point concerns the proposed use of a garden suite, as well as drainage. And I would, I would just like to note that the proposed use of the garden suite is as-of-right and the purpose here would be for multi-generational living needs. And the variance requested is mainly technical, is applies due to the cabana being attached. There are no soft landscaping or lot coverage variances being requested. And furthermore, drainage will be addressed through the building permit process. As mentioned, planning staff have no concern with the application and have recommended a tight plans. And urban forestry has recommended conditions two and three. And we, we feel the application is, is quite reasonable in minor nature and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, I have a question before we turn it over to panel members. Pertains to variance one, you're requesting a side yard setback. Your current north side yard setback is what, one-point-two-five?
I'll have to check the, I'll have to check the survey.
So, I believe you're more than compliant right now.
That's, that's correct.
But you're asking for a variance for a new build. Can you explain and justify that?
So, for the side yard setback, so what I mentioned earlier is that the, the portion which zero-point-nine-one meters applies is for a shorter nine-point-seven-meter portion of the side main wall. And actually, the remainder is one-point-one-zero meters. And there, there is precedent, there's also a setback to the neighboring dwelling at number forty-nine of four, four meters, which does provide adequate space between the dwellings and the, the breakup of massing of the, of the length helps to mitigate impact.
Okay, but e- even at the one-point-one, you're still below the bylaw requirement. And it's a new build, it's not like you're doing an addition or a revision.
Well, that's correct. Basically, it's, it, we felt that it was in line with the approval that we saw, so for example...
I mean, I understand your length variance, I mean, you've got a deep lot, you know, that's totally understandable. But I, I never like to see someone going for a new build and making the situation worse than the existing, so that's my only point, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I believe we have a speaker in the room?
Yeah, that is correct.
Maria? Come on up.
Hi.
Good afternoon, we'll just get your name and address first.
Sure. My name is Maria Mandardi. I live at forty-nine Bellman. I'm here with my husband and my neighbor Ursula that lives on the other side.
Okay.
So we are dead in the middle. She is. Anyway, we are here, we have serious concerns with this development. Since I live at forty-nine Bellman, we are directly adjacent to forty-seven on the north side. The proposed development at forty-seven will significantly disrupt our daily lives, limit our privacy, and negatively impact the character of our neighborhood. This is not your simple two-story addition, it is a complete transformation of the property. The plans indicate that the house will be built higher, longer, and wider, exceeding the Toronto bylaws for a two-story home. This dramatic expansion will alter the streetscape, disrupt the balance of the neighborhood, and reduce natural light entering our bungalow, affecting all three south-facing windows and our side door. The loss of sunlight will directly impact our ability to enjoy our home, both indoors and outdoors. Additionally, by constructing both the house and the garden suite one foot closer to our home, the new structure will encroach upon our space across the entire width of the property, further reducing our privacy. We want to clarify an important detail, the existing wooden fence was installed on our lot away from the actual property line. This must be considered when assessing property boundaries and any future development on the site. Beyond the size of the main house, the addition of a garden suite and an attached cabana raises even greater concerns. While the owner has indicated family use on the city's application form, the reality is that family situations change. There is a strong likelihood that the garden suite will be rented out, potentially as a short-term rental, adding to frequent tenant turnovers, as in Airbnb, as we all know. The increased foot traffic and activity will elevate noise levels and further erode our privacy as adjacent neighbors. What was once a peaceful and private space will become an area of constant disruption, significantly affecting the quality of our lives. Parking is another major concern. You people don't live on Bellman, but it is major. The house will have two parking spaces, one garden suite, the garden suite will have none. This will force additional vehicles on the street, where parking is already limited to a three-hour maximum. This is not, this will create significant inconvenience for residents, contribute to congestion, impose safety risks for the pedestrians, cyclists, and emergency responders. Winter conditions, as we've had this year, they should be considered. The expanded building footprint leaves less space for snow removal, raises serious concerns about where the accumulated snow will be stored. Without a clear plan, excessive snow buildup will create hazardous conditions for pedestrians and drivers, block driveways and pathways, increase the risk of flooding. Melted snow will have no way to drain. The residents of Bellman Avenue have come together to voice their concerns and formally object to several variances related to this development through a petition submitted to the committee's review, which I'm sure you have. The petition represents sixteen homeowners and a total of thirty-one signatures, a clear statement that the project does not reflect the interests of the community. The concerns we raised today are not just personal, they affect the livability, privacy, and safety of the entire street. Understandably, there's a housing crisis, but how, why should all the residents need to suffer to accommodate two garden suite tenants who do not even have access to get to the street? We're not against development when it aligns with Toronto bylaws and respects the character of the community. However, we strongly oppose any structure that disregards the needs of longstanding residents, diminishes the quality of life, and fundamentally alters the integrity of our street. I personally want to thank Adam Briscilla for helping me with this, telling me how it works, and also the office of Amber Morley and what she did. I want to thank all of you for taking the time and considering this. We urge the committee to take these objections seriously and consider the lasting effects that this development will have on our lives, of our lives, and pedestrians, kids, and the people living on Bellman. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if my neighbor has something to say.
We'll get to that. I just want to make a statement that...
Sure.
We're not here to approve or disapprove of a garden suite, because that is something that is permitted, that is something that's not up for discussion.
But how it's built, you are...
Well, that, with regards to specific variances...
Yes, I understand.
So I understand your issues with the side yard setback.
Yes.
But if you're going to be presenting us with arguments that, you know, a garden suite is going to generate more traffic, well, that's the whole point of having more people living in the same area.
Yes, but the garden people...
Anyway, that's, thank you.
They still have to get to the street.
Yes, they do.
Yep, so keep that in mind.
Okay. Do we have anyone? I don't have anyone else on my list, is there? Well, if she's just going to repeat what you said, then it's not really going to be...
She has an issue because English is a second language. She has, of course she has a choice.
If she's chosen not to speak, then, thank you. Is there anyone else in the room to speak to this issue? This item?
There is no one online as well.
Anyone online?
Nope.
No, okay, so we'll come back to the applicant? Joe?
Yes, I do appreciate the neighbors' comments. I would just reiterate my earlier points and the points that you have mentioned regarding the use of the garden suite, compliance with the zoning bylaw. The side yard setback was not referenced as a concern, and as far as parking goes, there's no, the driveway variance is not necessarily related to parking and any increased impact for parking there, and the condition there would actually be improved over the current driveway. And I just would like to reiterate as well that the owner has stated that the purpose of the garden suite would be for multi-generational needs.
Quite frankly, Joe, I don't think it matters to us. We're not here to approve someone's family use, but the actual land use.
Yes.
And I believe, and I believe that the resident Maria did express concern about the side yard setback, which you claim that there was no concern.
Oh, yes, okay. Yeah, and as far as the side yard setback is concerned, you know, we did have multiple rounds of conversations with the planning department, and we, that did not come up as a concern with planning, based on the precedent in the area. And, you know, we did work with them to achieve a compromise. We do feel that the impact is also mitigated by the fact that the south side does comply with the bylaw.
Okay, so you're not really addressing her specific question about her, the impact to her on the side yard setback, but that's fine, that's your choice.
Well, the impact on the side yard, the difference in the side yard setback that's requested along the length of the main wall, we do feel is relevant, because it does apply to a portion of it, and it does widen to the difference between the bylaw and the one point one meters that would apply to the remainder of the setback along that north side. We feel that is relevant.
Thank you. Any other questions from panel members? No? Okay. Okay, I guess we'll take it into committee then. Any discussion, or is anyone ready for a motion?
I'm going to move a motion, it may or may not be popular, but I appreciate all the comments that everyone made, but given the application and what we have to examine and focus on are the variances, and given that I believe they are minor and meet the four tests, subject to the planning and forestry memo, I move a motion for approval.
So subject to forestry and planning conditions?
Correct.
Okay, so there's a motion for approval? Is there a second? Okay.
It's not a popularity contest.
Seeing no second, or that motion fails? Does anyone have an alternative?
Well, I will move to approve the application, subject to, I believe, forestry and...
Isn't that what Mr. Dalton just did?
I say approve, I'm sorry, refuse.
Okay, so you're moving a motion to, you're moving a motion to refuse then?
Correct.
Okay.
Sorry, the opposite isn't.
Well, then it's not subject to, for, it's just a refusal. Okay, so Mr. Ross has moved a motion to refuse, is there a second to that motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Popovic? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, the application is refused. Thank you to all the presenters. Sorry, so that was Rick and, who did the second? Natalia, got it, okay.
There was a dissenting vote.
Item, okay, item twenty-two has been deferred. So we're on to item twenty-three. Well, you might as well just go home. You might as well just go home. Okay, so one hundred tenth Street. This is an application to construct a one-story vestibule addition along the front wall of the existing place of worship to accommodate an elevator. There are six variances being requested. Forestry was recommending denial, or in the alternative now, condition two, and Metro Links has advisory comments. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, members of the committee. My name is Joseph Markson. I am a proud and happy parishioner of St. Teresa's with my wife since two thousand and one. Our two teenage donors are also at St. Teresa's. I'm also here in behalf of Father Joe Morosky and the two thousand families that benefit from the many, many services and faith opportunities that St. Teresa's provides. This is, there's a personal dimension to this, because what we're seeking to do here is make St. Teresa's accessible to the entire Catholic community and those who enjoy St. Teresa's, who are part of the New Toronto community. My own eighty-eight-year-old mother cannot attend St. Teresa's right now because she can't get into the building. The same is true for my father, same is true for my mother-in-law and for my father-in-law. St. Teresa's has been imprisoned with a lack of access for far too long, and this is the opportunity to correct that. As you well understand, St. Teresa's parish is a hundred years old, and we celebrated our hundredth anniversary last year with a wonderful ceremony that was attended by Cardinal Francis Leo. There are many communities that St. Teresa's serves, over two thousand Catholic families. It is enriched by strong English and Polish communities. The masses are celebrated in both languages, and has a very rich multicultural parish with vibrant Filipino, Ukrainian, and other communities. And it also ministers to the Holy Trinity Elementary School, Father John Redmond High School, supports a Polish heritage school, which offers language classes, provides support to the elderly at Lake Shore Lodge, and on and on I can go. It's important to keep that in mind, because accessibility not only informs the parishioners at St. Teresa's, but the entire Catholic community and the community of New Toronto, well over five thousand persons on a rough math. What we're looking for is to be able to have wheelchair and walker and stroller access. I can't count the times where I've seen mothers and families struggle to try and get strollers up the steep stairs in the lobby of St. Teresa's. This needs to be fixed, and this respectfully is our best solution to fix a problem that must be addressed. It's long overdue, it's an exciting opportunity for our community, and we look forward to moving forward if and when we satisfy these variances. Some opening submissions on the variances. We have, the context that has to be brought to bear is that it's a lawfully existing place of worship. So it's the present building itself in many ways is not in compliance with the current bylaw, and this is just a matter of what happened back when it was built in the sixties. The changes are minor overall in the context of a lawfully existing building. We need the variances because we cannot build an elevator inside the church, because the layout of the interior of the church and the praying areas, this is the best solution. Provides close and convenient access for those who need the support of an elevator right out front for easy pickup and drop off. The proposed addition is not in conflict with the land purpose. It does not interfere with the residential character because it is next to a school, part of the parish, and nearby the commercial areas on Lake Shore Boulevard. This is not a typical residential area. Very importantly, the two large Colorado spruce trees that are beautiful in front of the St. Teresa's property will not be removed. Though turning it up, if you see the new plan drawing A dash one B, you'll see that those trees will not be removed with the building of this addition. The addition will also helpfully screen the often busy entrance to the church at St. Teresa's and benefit the neighbor to the south who is not objecting, and increases their privacy and does not block the sun. I'll go through a few comments on each of the variances very quickly, and be pleased to answer any questions. Gross floor area. The present and lawfully existing building has a gross floor area of two thousand four hundred forty-six square meters. The altered building would have twenty-four ninety point six square meters, that's an increase of only two percent. Variance number two, maximum permitted floor space. The floor space index of the current lawfully existing building is one point four five times the area of the lot. The altered building will have a floor space index of one point four eight, a zero point zero three increase. On the setback, it's important to take a careful look at the plans, as I'm sure you have and will. It's a one-story addition only. It will not create the impression that the building is close to the lot line. The bulk of the addition is suspended on piers. It will not appear to be the main wall of the building, that's clear from the drawings of the new church with the addition. As you can see in the drawing, the addition will occupy one suspended story of a fraction of the main wall. I'll speak to variance number five, soft landscaping. Grass and soft landscape will remain underneath the suspended floor. The addition will not reduce the grass area, as it may appear in the drawing. A close look shows the piers and the suspended floor. Number six on parking, we have no parking. Parking belongs to St. Joseph's, so we cannot create parking, zero now, zero then. That's my name. Please don't deduct that from my time.
Why don't you just turn it on?
There we go. We have the benefit of a petition signed by five hundred and fifty-four of St. Teresa's parishioners. We also have a letter of support from the principal, Father John Redmond, John D'Onofrio. We have, and letters from residents ninety-nine on one hundred and ten tenth Street. St. Teresa's is very excited at this opportunity. We're looking forward to making something that has been an impediment to full access and inclusivity at St. Teresa's to fix that. The alternatives that we have do not compare, are not workable, and will not solve this problem in a way that will actually become an asset to those who face mobility challenges. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't think you actually needed to do the full presentation, but you were so gung-ho to go, I wasn't going to stop you. Absolutely. We do have questions. There's also another person on the speaker's list, it's Teresa... It's Teresa Lubinski from the TDSB, from the Catholic School Board, I'm assuming. You can come up if you want, but I.
I think Mr. Marksen is doing really, really.
That's what I'm saying, don't.
But thank you, but thank you for your.
I, I do have some questions. So the parking lot is not part of this church site?
That's correct.
So i- it's actually part of?
St. Joseph's.
I see it. I've parked there on occasion, when I've gone on occasion, many years ago to that church, but I'd always thought it was part of the church, didn't even realize that. So that explains why it was fenced off in the photos as well.
That's right.
Okay. Are you going to, you do get access to that during?
We do, they open the gates. Sometimes we don't during the week because it's.
Well, during the week, I understand that.
We don't, and we're on the street on weekends. On Sundays, they will open up the, the gate and we'll park there.
The part, you are, are you creating a single parking spot in front of?
No.
No, so that's just a drop-off area?
I'm just going to look at the, our architect in the back for help when we're needed, but no, sir, I don't believe so.
Just, yeah, on the site pla- can we pull up the site plan? Sorry, if our staff can pull it up? No, no, we're not creating a single spot because, because there is no space, and then we will reduce.
Sorry, we don't have him as an agent.
Okay.
You can answer the question.
If he could stand by it, because it's an architectural issue only.
Well, it's not really, just on your, on your site plan, you have what looks like a spot to pull a car in.
No, no, this is a paving.
That, that's paving, that area there, that's, as, that you're looking at, is paving that's in front of the entrance of St. Teresa's. Right? That's not, that's not on the road. That's not on, on tenth Street.
No, I, I know it's not on tenth Street, but it's not a drop-off zone? It's not where you would.
The drop-off zone is, I've, I've used this hundreds of times, so the drop-off zone is right on the street of tenth Street. You can't pull in.
Can we, can we post the revised drawing, the one that was submitted most recently in the added materials, it's dated March the third?
Like, no vehicle ever turns right into St. Teresa's. That's, that's the, that's the walkway into the entrance in St. Teresa's.
Okay, right in front of, so i- if you, if you look right in front of the proposed addition.
Yes.
There is sort of like a, a tongue or a, a walkway that appears to go to the trees.
Okay, if you put your arrow on it, please, there's, there's a, right, that's a stat- that's a statue saying of the Blessed Virgin Mary, and there, that's a prayer area that's in front. It's not a parking spot.
Okay.
That is grass, there's soft landscaping, there's a statue, there's benches, it's a place for contemplation and prayer.
I, I just want to clarify because to me it looks like a.
Understands, sir, yeah, but no, yeah.
Okay, all right. That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I do have a question. If you use a stair glide as opposed to an elevator, would that reduce the number of variances?
Would that reduce the number of what?
Number of variances.
A stair glide, stair.
It can be both indoor and outdoor.
I can't speak to why a stair glide would, would reduce the number of variances. I just can tell you that a stair glide, by my understanding of what that means, is a very inferior form of access, and it will, you know, it wasn't even an option that the various consultants we spoke with put forward for this property. And also wouldn't go to the basement, which is critical, because that's, provides restroom access. That's another big advantage of the elevator is that it'll give full access to the, those who have mobility challenges and get them to the restrooms.
And the hall in the basement.
That's correct, sir. All right.
I had a question. Mr. Agent indicated that the two large trees in front of the structure, just repeat what you said about.
They will not be removed.
Not removed or damaged in any way?
They might have to be trimmed, like I would expect at the back of them might have to be trimmed, the, the west side of those trees may have to be trimmed. I can't speak to the scope of that, but they will not be removed.
That's why forestry is requesting condition two to protect.
Right, so my next question is that, have you had communication with forestry about their expectations and their conditions?
I haven't, I don't, I think that what you see is what you get with what we have from forestry there. No, hold on a second, please. I don't think we have been in communication with them, but we're not removing the trees. So whether they need permission to trim the trees, I don't know.
Yeah, we, we would impose a condition which basically would require you to make an application to urban forestry for potential injury or containment protection of the trees.
Well, that's, that's welcome and understood.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? Nope, so it's taken me, thank you, sir.
We're, we're very excited.
Okay.
It's a long time coming, we hope this moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, yeah, that was a great presentation. So unless someone has any other questions, I'm prepared to make a motion. I believe this certainly meets the four tests, it's very desirable and much needed. So I move for approval, subject to urban forestry condition two.
Yep.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ross, all in favor? Okay, unanimous approval, thank you.
One second. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that.
And my, and my favorite motion now.
Yeah, so that's our last item for the, for today.
I move for adjournment, and it is now, what time is it? It is two fifty-six PM.
Okay, thank you, all in favor?
That was unanimous too, right?
Yeah, okay. Thank you to everyone. Have a good afternoon.
Should've gone home.